Thank you for your patience. We can start late, but we cannot start early. So you have like two more minutes. Hey, we would like to welcome everyone and call to order the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is May the second, twenty twenty-three, and it is six thirty P M. And we are meeting in the city council chambers of West Valley City Hall. All of our members of the council are present. And we are joined at the dais with our city manager, Mr. Pyle, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamik. I'll now turn the time for our opening ceremony to Councilman Fitziamanu.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite a great friend of the city and a community leader and our neighbor here from West Valley, Ms. Janetta Williams, to offer some opening remarks tonight. She's the president of the N W A C P Salt Lake Branch and the Tri-State Conference of Idaho, Nevada, and Utah as well. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the invitation and the introduction. I've lived in West Valley City for close to thirty-five years now. I served on the Professional Standards Review Board for twenty years and worked with other groups and city officials here. But shortly before moving to West Valley, in nineteen eighty, Granger Hunter and Redwood residents voted to incorporate and become the West Valley City, population at that time seventy-two thousand five hundred nine, which has grown quite a bit now. And in nineteen ninety-six, Utah Governor Mike Levitt declares West Valley City a first-class city with over a hundred thousand residents. In nineteen ninety-six, city leaders lured the Denver Grizzlies hockey team to relocate to West Valley City, holding a hockey arena for the two thousand two Winter Olympics, which I know all of you know all of this history. But I wanted to just bring it to the attention also that we were proud to see in two thousand three, later rather, that the US Valley City opens the Utah Cultural Celebration Center. And upon urging and working with the late police chief and mayor Dennis Norfeld, through the request to the city council to rename a street to honor Rosa Parks was granted. Myself and community members and city councilmen, Curry Ruston, met on November fifteenth, twenty twelve, at the corner of thirteen fifty-five West and thirty-one hundred South to dedicate the new Rosa Parks Drive. I highlight all of this just to say that, working with the city manager, all of this was accomplished. This is not a time to to make any changes. The haste with which the city council had was looking at the change, the former government for a vote concerned many of our members in the community. City Council did so without the benefit of a survey to to gauge the interest among residents of West Valley. Such be was a detriment to our citizens, particularly those who already underrepresented it. Underrepresented. Thanks to the swift and persistent work of community advocates throughout our city, we made our position known. City Council should not consider such important measures without first consulting with the people of West Valley City. And as citizens of this growing city and the many accomplishments, I expect you to engage with your constituents before again attempting this. I only want the best for West Valley City, and I'm here to help whoever and wherever that I'm needed and upon your request. Thank you for allowing me to make comments. I will make myself more visible in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
You're welcome.
Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to our minutes. I'll turn it to the council, our minutes from April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, for discussion or emotion.
A motion to approve the minutes from April eleventh.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those pass unanimously. We will now go on to our awards and ceremonies. We, our Parks Department pretty much rocks. So we are going to turn the time over to Leanne Powell, the Executive Director for the Utah Recreation and Parks Association, and she's going to award our Parks Department.
Parks and Recreation.
And Recreation.
You don't want to forget the recreation part of that. So, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for allowing me just to have a few moments to to talk a little bit about your Parks Recreation Department and then honor one of your employees. It's a privilege and an honor to be able to do that. So as you mentioned, my name is Leanne Powell, and I'm the Executive Director of the Utah Recreation and Parks Association. So we, I represent, or our association represents about fifteen hundred Parks Recreation professionals throughout the state of Utah. So each year, we we do an annual conference in the spring, and kind of as the lead up to that annual conference, we take nominations for a number of different awards. This year was kind of a record-setting year. We had about ninety nominations for about twenty awards, so which was more nominations than we've we've ever received. And we get all of our past presidents together. And so we had twenty-one of our past presidents. Nancy back there is is one of our past presidents and represents the association very well, but we get that group together, and then they choose who wins the different awards. So one of the things I I guess I want to make sure that you are all aware and that the community understands is that the West Valley City Parks Recreation Department is a leader in our state. Jamie is our current U R P A president, does a great job. Most of your staff are on committees or on our Board of Directors. Lisa is our Executive Secretary of our Board right now. Of course, Nancy is the rock star in our Parks Recreation Association and has been a leader for years and years and just does absolutely great work. And when we come and do these presentations, I guess the other thing I want to make sure that you all understand is they cannot do the great work that they're trying to do without your support. It's not easy, and it takes money, but really what Parks Recreation is all about is the health and wellness of your citizens. And that takes a commitment to build facilities and to fund programs and do the things that will help your community be healthy and well. And obviously, you're doing a great job. You're a leader in the state, and that's a testament to what you guys are all doing and your support of Parks Recreation. So how about a quick round of applause for the council and the mayor and the support? So I will get to an award presentation. So I would like Candace to come up and join me up here. Probably, can I just sit back there and come on up here, Candace? So this will be a little bit of preaching to the choir, but one of the awards that we give out is for outstanding professional, outstanding recreation professional. We had seven or eight nominees for this outstanding group of nominees for this particular award. So as the past presidents get together and they have to kind of decide, you know, what float somebody to the top is is the one to receive this award. I think the thing that stands out couple of things, Candace's leadership, but her innovative leadership, like she just doesn't stand pat with programs that everybody else is doing. She's always very innovative, always trying to come up with. How do we reach all of our community? Not the ones that's pretty easy that they're going to come sign up for a basketball program or a baseball program, but really to look at how do we reach our entire community? And I think that's the one thing that that really stood out in her nomination and the the work that she's doing is that everything she does is about reaching out to the entire community. Some, just quick list of some of the things that she has brought within her leadership. Junior Jazz Program, an adaptive fitness program, really a concentration on trying to get urban outdoor recreation, so bringing kids to the outdoors and and finding ways in an urban setting to get kids outdoors. Skate camps, safe sitter babysitting classes, mini R C car races. That was a hit at our conference, by the way. West Valley came and did that at our opening social, and now everybody wants to know how to run that. Before-school camps, adult basketball, dodgeball, cornhole, cornhole, youth tennis and volleyball, a spark program, pop-up play programs, and the list kind of goes on and on. As, and it's a really long title, Supervisor of Programs, Activities, maybe Special Events Supervisor over all of it. Her staff loves her. She is a great leader. She's a leader in our state. She's just recently been nominated as on our Board of Directors as the region rep here in the the Wasatch area, and everything about what Candace does is first-rate, high-quality. She's a leader in the state, and she's doing awesome work. So on behalf of our past presidents and our U R P A membership, I'd like to award Candace with our Outstanding Recreation Professional for twenty twenty-three.
That's perfect. You can go stand up right against there. That's great. Okay, one, two, three.
So thank you for that. We'll now turn the time over to Lisa Hanusaka. There we go. And she is with the Utah Community Forester Forestry Council Award Presentation, and again, our Parks and Rec do a great job, so.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hanusak, and I'm the Business Manager, Executive Secretary of the Utah Community Forest Council. And we're a chapter, the Utah Chapter of the International Society of Horticulture, and one of our missions is to promote tree awareness and educate anybody and everybody about tree and proper trimming of trees, care of trees, anything about trees. And one of our, on our, we also have an annual meeting once a year, and in that meeting, we give out awards. And one of the awards is a community award, and for the twenty twenty-two Community Award, it was presented to West Valley City. And I would like to present this award to Darren Nor- Norden, who who is the forestry supervisor of West Valley City. And the reason why we presented this award to him is the West Valley City's Urban Forestry Program had a successful year in twenty twenty-two. They hosted a seven-week Tree Stories event, which displayed tree-related artwork and concluded with a Spring Fest celebration that educated people on environmental topics and featured a tree planting dance ceremony. Additionally, the city participated in various tree planting events throughout the year, including Arbor Day, a Tree Utah Event, and a fall planting, logging over two hundred and forty-five hours. Service groups who participated in tree projects include Tree Utah, G C R Tires and Service, Granite Technical Institute Environmental Class, and A S E Z W A O World Mission Society Church of God. In total, three hundred and twenty-five trees were planted on city-managed properties. The city also allocated funds to plant trees at the Ridge Golf Course. West Valley City has received Tree City USA status for twenty-eight years, with seventeen years obtaining the Growth Award, the longest active growth award recipient in Utah. And that is a really great accomplishment. And so I would like to present this award, this twenty twenty-two Community, West Valley City. Congratulations.
We're gonna have to get everyone like you want to be with each other. Let's make sure we're good. Oh, that's fantastic. Okay, one, two, and three. Thank you.
All right, we have one more proclamation. It's our Arbor Day proclamation. I'm going to turn the time over to Councilmember Norfeld to read that.
Whereas West Valley City, Utah, has committed considerable time and resources to the urban forest and has chosen to set aside a special day for the planting of trees. And this holiday called Arbor Day is observed in every state in the Union and throughout the world. And trees can reduce the erosion by wind and water of our precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify the community. And wherever they are planted, trees are a source of joy and spiritual and mental renewal. Now, therefore, the City Council of West Valley City, Utah, does hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three as Arbor Day in West Valley City, Utah, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect the trees and woodlands and to support the city's urban forest, and urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to our public comment period, or our public, our comment period. We will have a public comment period later with our public hearing concerning the C D B G allocation. So if you're wanting to speak on that, just give me the nod, and we'll move on, and you can speak during that time. And yes, everyone that came to support staff is welcome to depart if they don't want to stay the whole night. We won't be offended. So we'll give you a minute to leave, and then we'll continue on. All right, we will now accept public comment. Comment period is limited to thirty minutes. Any person wishing to comment shall limit their comments to five minutes. Upon recognition by the mayor, you will approach the microphone. If you did not sign up, please give us your name and address, otherwise just your name. All comments shall be directed to the mayor. No person addressing the city council during the comment period shall be allowed to comment more than once during the comment period. Speakers should not expect any debate with the council, mayor, or the city staff. The the mayor, council, and staff will have time to respond within the thirty minutes. So going off of our comment, I mean, our signup sheet, we'll go to Speaker One. And if you forgot which one you are, Travis, there we go.
Yeah. All right. How you doing, everybody? So first off, I want to give this to you guys. And pass it around, hang on to it if you will. So my name is Travis Valentino. I live in West Jordan, unfortunately, but that doesn't, that doesn't, you know, affect the reason why I'm here. So I have a love of skateboarding that dates back to the mid-eighties. Back then, we didn't have any skate parks, and we're forced to either build it and skate it or get chased out of a local parking lot. I mean, I know you guys definitely know about that. So I skated through high school and took a break after I gained a love for restoring old cars. I'll never forget the day I was on my way home from work, and the West Valley Skate Park was under construction. I pulled over on fifty-six hundred West to check it out. The Snake Run was formed up and ready for concrete. It was that moment when I realized I needed to get back on a skateboard. I'd wanted to skate a Snake Run since I was a kid. Some of these kids probably never knew that, but now they do. So shortly after the park was finished, I started to take my son Dylan there. He and I skate that park regularly regularly and have developed an unbreakable bond in the process. We have also met some really great people and have a love for that park that runs really deep. I've been cleaning and maintaining the West Valley City Skate Park every day for the last, what, seven years now? This will be, this will be my seventh summer. So I've also become an ambassador for Skate Park Respect, which is a registered five oh one C three nonprofit organization. Our our goal is to conserve skate spot, there are skate parks and skate spots through outreach, cleanup efforts, and responsibility within the community. The reason I do what I do is because I want the kids to always have a skate park. I've seen other local parks get closed and fenced off because of trash and vandalism. I never want to see that happen to our skate park. I think the benefits of an open skate park far outweigh the benefits of a closed skate park. The skate park brings the community together and keeps the kids off the streets and out of trouble. The kids really need this place. Same thing with the community. The reason I am here today is to please ask you to consider installing lighting at our skate park. As the days grow shorter in the spring and fall, our skate sessions get cut short. In the summertime, it's honestly better to skate it, you know, at night or in the evening when it's cooler. Lights will make our skate park safer and have been proven to decrease trash and vandalism. Since I started doing what I do, I have noticed a significant decrease in trash and vandalism, and most importantly, it will help keep the kids off the streets and out of trouble. Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider lighting up our skate park. And that is it. Thank you, guys.
Hey, Speaker Two.
My name is Adrian Vernostro, and all I want to say is that I hope you guys support the lights of our skate park. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Three.
Hello. My name is Isaac Somarlin. I'm here on behalf of them to support the lights. I think it'll really help make it safer. And yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Speaker Four.
Mike Barkum. These guys don't know skateboards. We used to make ours out of metal roller skates and bolt them to a board. I'm reading the paper, Saturday's newspaper. I know it's the trip. There was a great article in there, so I made copies of the article that I want y'all to read because it kind of falls into a category that Jim and I harp about all the time about, you know, how your neighbor's yard doesn't affect you and different things like that. Maybe some of you read the article. I don't know. But it's not from, it's not from this area, the pictures, thank goodness, because I'd have been on it in a heartbeat. But yeah, just take it, read it, see what, see what it tells you. It's, I liked it, so. Get a chance, read it. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker Five. Christie? It's Christie. Yeah.
My name is Christie, and I don't, I don't look like a typical skateboarder, but I've been skating at West Valley Skate Park for a year now. Travis can vouch for me. And I started a year ago as a way to bond with my twelve-year-old. And it's become an important part of my life. The the West Valley Skate Park is phenomenal. I love it. I go there several times a week. Just want to give a shout out to Travis for all the work he's done on it and for the for the grant lights. He's, he's amazing. Anyway, I just want to give my support for lighting up a park.
Thank you. Okay. Speaker Six.
Thank you. I'm I'm excited to see especially the young people here advocating for something that is interesting and and meaningful to them in the community. The the issue that I wanted to bring to the council tonight is something that came to me in my neighborhood just yesterday. And so it raised a question, and and I'm I'm bringing this situation just to clarify something that happened and maybe get some clarification at some point about what to expect. A few weeks ago, actually, just a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago, in our neighborhood, there was a car parked. So in this, in our little cove where three of our neighbors could not back out of their driveways. So the car was there. There was in one of the driveways an old Porsche, and when that neighbor noticed that that car was there and had been there for a while, he grew concerned about what the person was doing and called the police on the non-emergency line. So he was told that they would would show up, but about three and a half hours later, the car was still there. The person was still in the car, and and he was away from the house, so he contacted our other neighbor who called nine one one and went out to just kind of observe, and the car had not moved. The person was still in the car. At this point, there was a concern about a medical situation. So when the police finally arrived, still later, 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 it was some kind of medical situation. The person, the the situation was addressed, but in a, for about four or five hours, this car was blocking the driveways and was in the neighborhood with no excuse after the police had been called. So the question that has come up in my neighborhood, and and I don't want to bring this as a complaint, but a question for clarification. The the question is, what what is the procedure, and is there a way that neighbors can get clarity on what to expect and in what timing to expect address of a situation like that? Because the longer that car was there, the more concerned they became. Ultimately, five of the neighbors in that little Alcal area in our H O A were grew more and more concerned because they couldn't get in and out of their driveways. One neighbor got concerned because his wife was on his, her way home from work, and he didn't want her to encounter a stranger in their driveway, and he didn't understand what was going on. Meanwhile, one of the other neighbors did come home with their kids, and they encountered the same kind of concern. So that's the situation, and if there's any way for communication to explain what and and what we all can expect and better, just better communication so that we know how to understand that situation. Otherwise, Otherwise, um, I'm excited to be here tonight. It's neat to see all the awards, and I'm excited to see Ms. Williams here with the opening, and again, the kids, um, advocating for something that they want to see. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Was there anyone else that wished to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? Just give us your name and address, please.
Um, Chris Bambro.
When you get to the microphone, she's gonna have it on the recording.
Okay, um, my name's Chris Bambro. Um, address is one zero nine two three South Porcini, out in South Jordan, Utah. So like Travis and all the other kids here, I'm here to advocate for the lights for the skate park in West Valley. Um, as a former small business owner in West Valley and a current employee of USANA who works here. I like Travis as well, saw the skate park going up and super excited because I started skateboarding in the early nineties as well. That's kind of just growing up with me and my family and so throughout the years, I've just seen how the skateboard has impacted people and kids and brought, I don't know, how many people would you say of, like, at least this older people? Like this huge community of people that have got together for the love of skateboarding. And in my, uh, personal opinion, from what I've seen from lights happening at skate parks, the longer you keep kids engaged at night, the happier everybody is and happier the kids are, the parents, the community. And the kids just grow up to be stronger bonds and everything, so I am all in for lights of skate parks and keeping the fence off because I travel all the way from South Jordan every day in the morning, they come skateboard here. And I have lots of other parks, but it's just this one that has got us a hold of us all, so I'm in support of lights, definitely. So thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Getting new mayor and council, Jim Vissok, five four one, West Lockwood Drive, West Valley City. I've talked about Travis several times here and about what he does for the city of West Valley. He spends every single day, um, except Sundays. I don't think he's there on Sundays. Um, he uses their Sundays too. Okay, I don't get out on Sunday, so that's, um, he's cleaning up our park. If there's graffiti, he's cleaning it off. He's making sure the trash cans. Um, last year I talked about, we need more trash cans. I think we counted seven yesterday when I came by before we had two. So there, there is some progress, but this man has put his heart into our skate park. And putting lights out there, I, I think would be great. Um, especially, Miss Day, um, last week or the week before, talked about how they won't, won't just be on all the time. Yeah, they'll be able to be turned on, and then after hours, they won't be able to come on the LED, the energy efficient. Candace, who was just recognized, has done several skate things there, and she gets her dad to come out, and he, he mixes the music. And that's one very, very successful event that she puts her heart and soul into it. She makes sure the kids drink water. She stops, gets on the mic, come on over and get the water and stuff. Um, so it's, I wish she would have stayed in. Um, I've seen her at lots of events. The guy skating, well, what, we have all guys here, we have one lady come up, but they have a girls skating events too there. And they have a lot of young ladies that are into skateboarding. And, um, my hometown, uh, we used, we go with the chill group. We've had several people learn how to skateboard and snowboard. And with, without the efforts of these guys, because they go around advocating skate parks and building them throughout the state, we wouldn't have that here. And so, once again, I want to thank you Travis for what you do for the city. Um, also Derek was recognized. You want to know something about trees? That man knows more about trees than you would ever know. That's the positive stuff about our park. Um, we had somebody come up a couple of weeks ago about softball for girls. And that they talked about how, um, Centennial Park uh, programs come into Centennial Park and maybe getting on the circuit. But what they've forgotten and what people have forgotten is City Park has several ball fields. And the problem is, is they're neglected, the weeds, the overgrowth there. We did, um, some dog walking. And it's just, it's embarrassing that everything is being spent at Centennial, taking care of when we have several ball fields at City Park that could be used. And since it doesn't seem like they're being used, maybe the ladies can use those. Also, our park conditions, we got lots of people winning awards for, for job, but go into our parks and look at them. They, they need work, and the excuse is we need to, we need more employees, we need more employees, or maybe they need to get more creative on getting some of these boys, come out to job fairs, do job fairs, get out there and get some youth, and then of course the pay. So that's all I have, but once again, hopefully you guys vote for those lights. I think that's the way it's going from the study meetings and so that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wished to speak that didn't have a chance to sign up? So please give us your name and address.
This is for a school assignment, but my name is Carly Christensen, and I live in forty-one thirty-six South Rashford Court, West Valley, Utah. Um, I am with the skateboarding community, um, even though I'm doing this as a, as an assignment. Um, just hearing all the things that they have to say, hearing that they want more lights, um, having longer hours, being able to do something that they grew up loving and doing something that they're really passionate about. I feel like they should deserve the lights that, um, are on the skate park, even though I'm not really that interested, well, I'm interested, but I'm just not that professional into skateboarding. I'm still trying to learn. Um, but I just feel like it's really important because like Travis said, um, that lights would help students stay off, like, and kids, whatever, um, stay off of the, like, streets and, like, they have somewhere to hang out, somewhere to make their hearts happy, and somewhere to make them feel happy and like just okay in their environment that they love. And so I just want to say that I totally support them, and I feel like you guys should listen and make our hats, our hearts happy and get us lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Hey, thank you. Oh, one more. Sorry, you were hiding on me.
No. Sorry, um, Brian Barrios, uh, thirty-six oh two south sixty-four seventy west, uh, West Valley City, Utah. And, um, I'm here with the skateboarders of West Valley City with, uh, trying to advocate for more lights. Um, I'm trying to do it for more like the youth, but also the young adults that are like having to get accustomed to this new life of having to work in the day, having a nine to five, and only being able to skate either in the night. And we're not trying to go to downtown or like skate any of the public areas without permission. It would be best if we have lights in the skate park and actually do responsible skating, you know, the, the way that you guys want it and the way that we would want it, you know? So if you could just listen to the young youth and the young adults of skate park, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Okay, we'll now close the pub, or the comment period, and I'll turn the time to our city manager, Mr. Pyle, for any comments.
Thanks, ma'am. I don't have any comments other than just to say thanks for all the positive comments tonight. Good, good session.
Thank you. To the council.
Yes, I maybe have one. Yeah, thank you again. The first, first, uh, first thing is to want to say thank you all of you to come here and to bring it up about the skate, uh, about the light, and I think, uh, we had money to build a skate, you know, uh, things there, I think, and we can find money to, to get the light for them. Yeah. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Hey, I just have one comment. I now know, I think I know who the seven AM skater is that I see every morning on my way home from McDonald's. So, oh, is it Travis? Okay. Yep.
Six, you know, getting to five thirty seven.
So.
About eight or nine.
So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now go to our public hearing. Um, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Pyle to introduce our CBDG. CBD, never mind, just go for it.
Thanks, ma'am. Our, uh, Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, yes, which we uh, have been undertaking as a city for many decades. In fact, even before I worked for West Valley, I worked for Midvale, so my thirty-plus years, CDBG has been around. And for West Valley, we usually get about a million dollars of allocation from the federal government for projects which can include community projects, it can, can include infrastructure-type projects, and is all geared towards these areas of the city that meet a particular, um, proportion of the income. This year, we've been through the process again. Uh, the council's heard and seen, uh, had presentations from Peggy and, and the department as to what, uh, would be included in projects for this year. Um, we are required to hold a public hearing each year, and so therefore we're having that on the agenda now, ma'am.
Hey, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council before we open the public comment period? Public hearing. Hey, seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing and invite anyone that would like to speak to this issue to come up to the mic. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will turn Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-two to the council for discussion or emotion.
Mayor, I would move for approval of Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-two.
Thank you.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We'll now go to our resolutions. We have Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-three, and I'll turn it to Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, in West Valley City's budget process each year, it's around an eighth-month profit process that we start in December, and we start projecting revenues, gathering those from the departments. We start calculating expenditures. We start at that point, or after that point, having, uh, meetings in um, council discussions with the, the council, and all of that wraps up with a final adoption of the budget in August. This year will be August twenty-second with a public hearing with a presentation with a certified tax rate that we get from the county. At this point in the budget process of the year, so here we are at the beginning of May, we also have to adopt tentative budget as per state law. We've been through a number of those consider, uh, discussions, and so by resolution, we have here before you this evening, the adoption of that tentative budget.
Hey, thank you. Um, I'll now turn it to the council for comments or a motion for Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-three.
Would move to, uh, approve Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Norpel?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Nope.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Aye.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. We'll now move to Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-four. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would authorize us to enter into an agreement to select health for health insurance coverage for the upcoming twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year.
Hey, thank you. And we'll ask the council for discussion or a motion on Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-four.
I would motion to approve Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norpel?
Yes.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now turn to Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-five. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution, somewhat similar to the last one, would authorize the city to enter into an agreement for dental insurance with EMI Health, who we are proposing to, uh, continue on with the contract, uh, relationship that we've had in the past.
Thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for comments or a motion.
Move for approval of Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norpel?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now turn to Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-six. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution, um, would allow us to enter into an agreement with Momentum Recycling for the provision of recycling services for curbside glass collection. Although West Valley has a recycling program, we've not been able to recycle or collect glass in the past. Uh, this would allow us to do so and is, uh, if adopted, would be provided on an elective basis uh, by any of the residents who would so desire to have it.
Okay. And as a little bit of clarification, we'll still have our glass bins out of Centennial Park.
Yes.
Places.
Good point, yes.
Okay, so you can still drop it off if you don't have one at your house. Okay, I'll now turn Resolution twenty-three fifty-six to the council for comments or emotion, or a, yeah, motion.
Well, I just had a question. Even if we pass this tonight and they don't get enough subscribers, will it not launch?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
So if, if we pass it tonight and they don't get enough subscribers?
Oh.
Will it still not launch?
It will not launch, but I would imagine, given the, the big advocate we have for it here, he probably would go and try to get more people to sign up anyway, however that might happen through marketing. But the, the minimum number threshold-wise is pretty low. It's about a hundred, it is a hundred and fifty subscribers, so.
Okay.
The company felt pretty, um, confident that that wouldn't be hard to reach.
Okay. I will, uh, motion to approve the, uh, twenty-three fifty-six.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Norpel?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Aye.
And Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now turn to Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-seven. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. This resolution would authorize the purchase of a new vehicle for the city's fleet. This would be a Jeep Gladiator, I was gonna say Wrangler, for the purposes of help in our newly re-instituted dare program.
Hey, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for discussion or emotion.
Move to approve Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-seven.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
No.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norpel?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes by majority.
Thank you. So just as one note, it seems like we're just whizzing through these like nobody's business, but we did have them all presented to us last week or previously, and we've had at least a week to ask our questions, do our studying, so that's why there's not a lot of chatter up here. Okay, we'll now turn to Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-eight. Mr. Pyle?
Thank you, ma'am. I don't know if this is just, uh, kismet or serendipity or what's going on here. In fact, I can't, uh, help but think of poor Mr. Josh Sherman, who I, I think needs some recognition here, right? For the, like, ten years he advocated for getting the skate park at all in the city. So in addition to all the support and help here, which is greatly appreciated, appreciated, we probably ought to at least mention Josh, but also, uh, um, with the dedicated efforts of the Parks Department, we have been looking at, uh, trying to get some lighting over there for the skate park for some time. In additional, in addition to the pickleball court complex, and this inter-local cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County would help with that project by receiving grant funds in amount, in the amount of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars of the total project. West Valley matching another hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars to accomplish this approximately three hundred and seventy thousand dollar project. So should be noted, not actually really that easy to get these lights in here in a long time, but we're certainly happy to be here and, and be able to bring the project.
Thank you. And one note, Josh designed the utility box wraps?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
That are out at the skate park, so he's a great artist and a great advocate for skateboarding. So I will turn it to the council now for discussion or emotion.
A motion to approve, uh, Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-eight, and have fun.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty-Simonu?
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilman Harmon?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norpel?
Yes.
Mayor Ling?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We will now move on to, we have one more. Um, Resolution twenty-three dash fifty-nine. Mr. Pyle?
Thanks, ma'am. In addition to the inter-local agreement, this resolution would allow us to actually purchase the equipment for the lighting park in the amount noted previously.
Okay, thank you. I will now turn that to the council for discussion or emotion.
Well, it's a good thing that we're not making pickleball and skate park compete because
Well, it's a good thing that we're not making pickleball and skate park compete because I think they won if we're counting people. We love our pickleball folks too. I would move to approve resolution twenty three dash fifty nine.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I want to thank the front row and those that came in support for showing up. Sometimes the youth don't think they make a difference, but they do. So thank you. Okay, we'll now go to resolution twenty three dash sixty, Mr. Pile.
Thank you ma'am. This resolution authorizes an inter-local cooperative agreement between Salt Lake County and ourselves for partial road improvement. Funding for our thirty nine hundred south project. This would run from Redwood Road to the Jordan River Bridge. And we are getting three million dollars of county transportation funds towards that design and construction out of roughly an eight million dollar project.
Hey, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty three dash sixty.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Aye.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move to resolution twenty three dash sixty one, Mr. Pile.
Thanks ma'am. This resolution authorizes our road, our annual road striping contract. This one's a little bit different in that we're proposing a multi-year contract, it'd be three hundred thousand dollars annually with. A total authorization of up to one point one million through fiscal year twenty five and twenty six. We had three bids on this project. Tech striping gave us the most favorable bid. We know they're experienced and capable of doing it, so we. We propose to enter into the contract.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for discussion or a motion on resolution twenty three dash sixty one.
I move for approval of resolution twenty three dash sixty one, second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Aye.
And Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move to our consent agenda. We have four items. They're pretty routine. Does anybody need an explanation or can we just move ahead with discussion or a motion?
Can we make a motion to approve all four items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Ms. Kamic.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hune.
Yes.
Councilman Harmon.
Yes.
Councilman Whitstone.
Yes.
Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Aye.
Mayor Ling.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Hey, thank you. And we just have one more motion.
Motion to, I'm sorry, motion to.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. Thank you so much for coming out. We really do appreciate.
We do have three more meetings.
Still have three more meetings, but you know, you can stay or not. So it's the RDA, the Housing Authority and our Building Authority and I'll turn it to those directors.
Call to order a regular redevelopment agency meeting tonight. And as right now it is seven twenty two PM and we're here at the CD Hard, thirty six hundred. South Constitution Boulevard and West Valley City, Utah, A four one one nine. The opening ceremony is a councilman is a VTC menu they had done earlier. And Eric Councilmember is here tonight. We have approval of minutes, April four, twenty twenty three, so we'll turn it over to the council.
I move for approval of the minutes of April fourth, second.
So I have a motion, I have a second, so you are in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so is unanimously. Okay, city manager, Wayne Pyle, you have anything to say?
No report for tonight, sir. I believe we only have the one item. Unfortunately, I got a little excited and turned off my computer a little early, so I'm bringing it back up right now, but I think that's it.
Right. Well, thank you for reporting that. I appreciate that very much. Okay, resolution twenty dash zero two and I will turn over to city manager Wayne Pyle.
Thank you, sir. So our RDA budget, this is the tentative approval for that as well. It is a little bit different and will be for the Building Authority and the Housing Authority in that you adopt the final budgets for them in June as opposed to August. That's probably the only significant difference in the process to be noted. The budget itself, we have, I think it's sixteen project areas which we. Do various projects in and, and the funding for the, the both revenues and expense side of that. Is not significantly different than last year. We have talked about it in previous meetings and nothing's changed since our last discussion, sir.
Right, thank you so much. I will turn it over to other council. For a motion or action.
Move to approve resolution twenty three dash zero two.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, have a second, so we'll turn over to our city recorder.
Mr. Fifty Simonu.
Aye.
Mr. Whitstone.
Yes.
Mr. Harmon.
Yes.
Ms. Ling.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Chairman Hune.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. One last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, so all favors of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Housing Authority, I think that's Councilman Fifty Simonu.
Call to order our. Housing Authority, we've had an opening ceremony and a roll call. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes of April fourth. And I'll open that, leave that to the council to discuss.
I would move for approval of those minutes.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Do we have a report from our executive director?
Uh, no, sir, thank you.
Okay, would you mind please introducing our resolution twenty three dash zero two?
Yes, thank you. So this also is the tentative budget adoption. The only significant difference in the Housing Authority. Budget this year as opposed to years previous is we did get an extra amount of federal funding for the one year. It's not a, gonna be an ongoing thing, I don't think, far into the future, but for this year, that'll amount to almost, well, actually a little over. Extra million dollars for our various housing programs.
Thank you. Okay, then I'll put resolution twenty three dash zero two up for consideration by the authority.
Motion to approve resolution twenty three dash zero two.
Second.
Properly before us and I'll turn it over to Nicole for the roll call.
Mr. Whitstone.
Yes.
Mr. Harmon.
Yes.
Mr. Hune.
Yes.
Ms. Ling.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld.
Yes.
And Chairman Fifty Simonu.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this point. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Last but not least, I'll call to order the meeting of the Building Authority for West Valley City. Opening ceremony and roll call have already been taken care of. I will turn it to the Building Authority Board for approval or discussion of the minutes for April fourth, twenty twenty three.
Motion to approve the minutes of April fourth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
The motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Turn the time to our executive officer for any business with regards to the business of the, to the building.
Report and the only businesses are one item, sir.
Perfect. Would you like to introduce that item?
Thank you. So Building Authority is a entity that is set up or an entity that is set up for purposes of administering debt service. Between the various projects, buildings, facilities that the city's built over the years and as such is really just a pass through. Where you'll see the revenues and the expenditures really pretty much match up in that stand, from that standpoint. Nothing has changed from the earlier reports and discussions we've had on the budget in the year. And so, sir, I'll just turn it back with, to you unless there's any questions.
Great, thank you. I'll turn it to the Building Authority for any motion or discussion.
Move to approve resolution twenty three dash zero two.
Second.
A motion in second, Ms. Kamic.
Mr. Fifty Simonu.
Aye.
Mr. Harmon.
Yes.
Mr. Hune.
Aye.
Ms. Ling.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Nordfeld.
Yes.
Chairman Whitstone.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.